Hurry, scurry, please. I'll, I thank you for attending. Call this meeting to order and if anybody has a declaration of peculiar interest, they can bring it forward now or any other time. The delegation from Yucinda will be at 10:30. So we'll move into the consent agenda and that the, that the following consent agenda items be received and that staff be authorized to take the actions necessary to give effect to the recommendations in the staff reports and that the correspondence be supported or received for information as recommended in the consent agenda. Put that on the floor, Counselor McKee. Counselor Compass?
Thank you.
McKee and Compass, okay. Anybody want to pull anything? Yes, Counselor Fosker.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'd like to pull items A and B, please.
All right. We'll deal with that later on in the, in the agenda then. Anybody else have any comments on other items? Thank you. So we'll approve the, any other discussion on that? Okay, so we'll approve C, D, E, and F as, as listed. All in favor of C, D, and E as listed? Thank you. The motion is carried. We'll bring up the other two later on in our, in our meeting here today. So flipping over the page. Items for direction and discussion. That the draft joint accessibility advisory terms of reference be received and that the draft terms of reference be circulated to all lower tier municipalities along with a letter extending an invitation to participate in the committee beginning in 2019. Put that on the floor. Thanks for attending. Patterson and Burley, thank you. Okay, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So before you this morning, counsel, is a draft terms of reference for the joint municipal accessibility advisory committee that would serve Gray County and any local municipalities that are interested in participating on this joint committee. Any municipality with at least 10,000 residents is required to have an accessibility advisory committee, but it is a valuable resource for smaller municipalities too because it makes it easier for them to get feedback from people with disabilities. The terms of reference, it's very much similar to how it already was for our county-specific AAC. The voting membership would still consist of seven members, including one member of Gray County Council who's elected annually. The non-voting membership will consist of the county's accessibility lead as well as one staff representative from each participating local municipality who would act as a liaison between the AAC and their local council. The chair and vice chair will be elected annually. Meetings will be held at the call of the chair as enough business arises and we'd aim for at least four times per year. That number could change depending on how busy the other municipalities keep the committee. It's a voluntary committee, but mileage would be compensated as usual. And just the last thing I'll add is that the terms of reference have been shared with all of the local municipalities for their feedback. Overall, the feedback was fairly positive. There are a couple of municipalities that are already going that were a little less interested, as expected.
Well, it's okay. I want Grant to go to the door. On something else.
Yeah, so.
Are the, the municipalities that are, let's say, not interested, can they be convinced to be interested in the betterment of a Gray County umbrella approach?
Quite frankly, we, these are municipalities that are already up and running and they're looking at this with the kind of if it's not broke, don't fix it approach, and I would very much agree with that. But I would suggest still reaching out to them and even if they want to send a staff member just to collaborate on the committee and be involved from an information sharing perspective, as is actually already being done, that that would be encouraged just to provide that consistent approach.
Thank you for that. I certainly support encouraging everybody to send a representative to that. I think it's important as we move and forward and it's important to share, so. Any other comments? Yes, Counselor Fosker.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So I still have concerns about inconsistency in compensation and remuneration for committee participation. So as an example, our audit compliance committee, I understand, is going to get $1,000 retainer and $150 a meeting. And here we are asking for people to participate in what is, you know, a legislatively required committee, and I think that we should encourage participation, and all they're going to get is mileage. So I just, you know, I have a problem with the inconsistency of that. That's my comment.
All right, do we, any comments? Just duly noted, I guess, unless somebody else wants to get involved?
I think certainly next year, when we have a chance to discuss the, the committee structure again and that compensation question, it's something that we can bring forward for consideration.
Thank you. Counselor Fosker.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. And to that point, when we put out calls for participation in committees, I think it's really important to make sure that all of the relevant information is out there, specifically what the compensation will be, because I've seen inconsistency in that as well. Thank you.
Okay, that's duly noted. Okay, any other comments on accessibility committee? Okay, yes, Counselor Compass.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just want to let everyone know that we do have an accessibility committee solidly in place in our municipality, and it has worked extremely well. We're very, very proud of the participation that we have from volunteers who are themselves disabled and contribute so much to the workings of that committee. And we also have our staff person who is, comes to the county meetings and will continue to do that. So in terms of supporting it as a regional initiative, we certainly do that, but I just want to assure everyone that this is really a very vital piece to our program going forward. All of our municipal buildings, of course, have to be completely accessible by 2025. So we're, we're complying with that and we're also creating an interaction with that segment of our community that sometimes gets overlooked. So I'm very, very proud of the work that our accessibility committee has done over the years and will continue to do and certainly encourage everyone to get on board with this program because it's very valuable.
Thank you, Counselor Compass. It's certainly great to hear that you're leading the way and that you're willing to share, so I think that's great. Any other, any other comments? As being done, we'll call the motion and all in favor. Thank you very, very much for that nice report. Thanks, Rob. Okay, we are moving along here and where are we now? All right, B. Road closure. That, that report, PSRCW-08-2018 regarding road closure and common operating picture municipal 511 and responder 511 be received and that Gray County staff continue to invest in the best solutions to improve information sharing among emergency response organizations and the public. And that as per the, am I on the right path here? Yes. And that as per Gray County's purchasing policy, disposal of surplus goods 11.2C, the decommissioned GTAC computers be distributed at no cost to the lower tier fire departments to support the use of municipal 511 and responder 511. Put that on the floor. Counselor Mackey, Counselor Woodbury. Yes, Jody.
In just a minute, I'll have Joel Meyer, who you've met before, give us a little demonstration, but in the meantime, I'll give a bit of an introduction. So in 2014, we built our first road closure application that allowed staff to create road closures and display that information to the public. There certainly weren't a lot of municipalities doing that sort of presentation of the data. Really, it was just the province and, and the larger highways where you could go on and you could see road conditions and what has been plowed recently. A lot of the track my plow stuff came later on, so I think what we were doing was fairly innovative at the time. Pretty much as soon as we launched it, we, we realized there was a lot of things we could do to improve that product for residents and for our own use. And, and one of the big ones was sort of getting a regional picture. So like I said, mostly other municipalities were not showing road closures on a map, and since they weren't, and since they weren't managing that way, what we did was open our data and we asked everyone else to more or less do the same. So if there ever came a time when people started doing their own thing, we could just pull it into our map. Joel took that work and he's improved the public face, public facing application that we have with, with a lot more data than was available. But we were still looking at kind of redoing the backend, the piece that let us manage those road closures. Now, at the time that we built our own, there really was no commercial solution. There was no one operating in this space doing something specific for municipalities, again, to manage and, and share the road closure information. But then transnomas came along and started a project called Municipal 511 and Responder 511. Both of these products kind of grew out of the concept that was pushed by the federal government called Masses X. And where it's really beneficial is, well, there's two areas. One is the fact that there's only one commercial group is, is kind of handy because a lot of our neighbors are getting involved in the project. And the other piece is that it exposes a lot more of this data to emergency services and the kind of, kind of application that's known as a common operating picture. So if it's ever used for emergencies, you get a lot of situational awareness, information on a map that can be shared with paramedics and fire and emergency planners. We have been looking to do something like that on maps, different concepts for a while now, and I think this one is, is truly beneficial. And what kind of came out of discussions on another project, the Rural Interoperability Project led by Bruce Nekulov, is they actually funded this project for Bruce Huron and our county for the rest of this year. So I'll come back to what we'd like to do to support the lower tiers, but for now, I'll just give Joel the mic and let him give a little presentation. I will say that he actually recently spoke at the local GIS conference to talk about all the work we're doing with this type of data, not just on this application, but the, the management for the field crews on the roads as well.
Oh, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. So what I have on the screen here is the public facing side of Municipal 511. So this is a website that anybody's able to go to. You're able to go through here, you can click on different events. You can see that we've put in our own road issues, a construction event in this case. If I scroll down and zoom into Owen Sound a little bit, Owen Sound Public Works Department has put in their issues as well. We can move over to Gray Highlands here, and they've put in a load restriction on the bridge. So what I'm showing here is that the map in front of you is not just a Gray County map. It encompasses all of our municipalities, and it goes beyond our municipality, too. So if we zoom out, we can see MTO road closures on the 400. If we go all the way over to Ottawa, we can see their load restrictions and their construction. So this is something that's province-wide. Not every county is on board just yet, but if somebody is driving from Ottawa to Gray County, now they can see on one map exactly what the issues they're going to face along the way is. So like I said, this is the public side of it. We do have a few other portions. So we have our own logged-in version, which looks a little more like this. So again, you can see a lot of the same information that you had before. I can still go over to different parts of the province if I want to, but we do have a bunch of additional layers that we can turn on. So this is great for emergency services or for even our own public works department as they can display things here that may not necessarily need to be displayed to the public. So if I go through quickly the list of layers, we have things like our cameras and sensors. So this isn't on the public map, but we can go through and we can check out our road cameras that we have at the roundabouts in Blue Mountains. We can go through and check out the MTO road cameras that they have on Highway 26 there. We can turn those on and off. External road issues are mostly ones by the MTO and other agencies that we're importing in. Road restrictions, cautions, so those would be like your brushing and cutting, winter, no winter maintenance, unassumed roads. And then we come down, so those are for the roads departments. So those are the ones that they're using both internally and public facing, so they have the ability to put that on the public map to notify the public. Below there, you'll see the common operating picture. So these are other layers that can be turned on for either emergency services or in the event of an emergency, the public works departments can see these as well. There's a whole slew of them here. I'm going to skip over a bunch for the sake of time, but things like key infrastructure, so we can go in here, we can see all of our fire departments, or fire stations, sorry, our hospitals, our paramedic depots. So they're all available on there. It's very quick for someone to go in and see a little bit of information, phone numbers, things like that are all available at a quick glance as opposed to having to look it up through many different sources. If I continue on, we do have the ability to put in burn permits. So if we're cutting down on phone calls to the fire departments, asking if the neighbor has a burn permit, we can put that on there. They can look it up quickly. Resistant hazards, so if there's a chemical storage facility or propane storage facility, we have to know where those are. In the, in the event of emergency, it's nice to be able to put those on and see them quickly. Skipping through the last few there, we do have some additional ones. Waze Connected Citizen Program is something that we at the county have been a part of for over a year now, and it allows us to view data that citizens are putting in through the Waze app. Again, this is more informative data. It's not authoritative by any means, but it is nice to be able to take a look in Mount Forest, for example. You can see a bunch of construction events have been reported by citizens. So we do have the ability to at least view it and see what's going on. Scrolling down even further, we have some demonstration layers, which I'll show you in a second. And we also have some overlays, so these are very nice, especially for emergency services. If there's a hazmat event, they need to know which direction the winds are blowing. Very quickly, that pops up there and they can notify the people that need to be notified first. One of the nice things about this system is how quick and how easy it is to add a new event in. So let's go into Chatsworth, for example.
Why?
Why? Just because it's nice and barren for now, because there's no real events going on, so we can, we can pretend. So under my training layer, I'm going to add in a water main break in Chatsworth. So it's a few simple clicks here. I can start typing in water main break if I want a description.
Couple clicks and there's Highway 40 going through.
It's a plan for the future.
So in under a minute, we have now posted a water main break. This will not only post it on a public website, but it will send an email out to who's ever on your email list, so whether that's the county, paramedics, public works departments, it will also send a fax out to anybody who's not receiving emails yet. It will also potentially send a text message out if you have people within your organization that prefer to receive it that way. I'll leave that one there. It is nice that you also have a record of it, so you can go back later. If you are putting in construction events at the end of year, you can create charts and tables based on the number of events that have been created. Within this, however, we've also added additional functionality to it. So I like the tools to be able to input information, but I wanted something on our own website that was a little more specific to Gray County. So we've created this page here, which will take in all the events from Municipal 511, but also add additional information that's more pertinent to us. So for example, we have our road conditions. So these are reported by our patrolers, they go out and report them anyways, and we have that data, so we're going to put it on there and make it easier for the public to navigate through the county. So for example, here, Gray Road 16 is reported as barren damp. And if we wanted to go through and see what the current construction is right now, we can look in Owen Sound, and this is all live. So we have a long-term road closure right now for paving operations. So we're using the tools of Municipal 511 and then kind of wrapping it in our own Gray County themed webpage. That makes it a little bit nicer, and if people are coming to the county site to view county information, they may get overwhelmed by having a whole province worth of data in front of them. So trying to narrow it down for what's important for the people that are visiting our site. We do also push out the notifications to Twitter, so anytime a new event is created within, by the county, it goes to our Twitter account, our Gray County Plow, and it will give a little description and a little map of where it's happening, so people can sign up and follow that along, so that way any new information that comes through, they're able to see. We also post when an event has ended on Twitter, so if there's a water main break started and it's affecting this area, that's on there, and then if it finishes a few hours later, that will also be displayed there. In keeping with our AOD compliance, we also offer a text version of both the road conditions by our patrol areas and our road issues by however many there are going on currently.
That's very creative. You, I can see that you've got your heart into that. That's great. Appreciate that.
And so just to wrap up on, on the issue of the common operating picture and emergency services, as Joel mentioned, anything we put in here is integrated for traffic issues with Waze, which is kind of the most common way people get their, their traffic, because that's owned by Google now, so if you're navigating, it's hitting the most residents as we can. It's integrated with InterDev, which is the computer aided dispatch software that Kevin's paramedics are using, and they're going to be able to access that in their trucks this autumn. So if you have crews responding to an incident, they can have whatever's been posted in this portal available on the software they're using. And there's one more key integration that's relevant for us. It's, it's integrated with an application called Who's Responding? And what that is, is something you put on your cell phone. Whenever the, whenever there's a call out for volunteer fire departments, the, the chief or responders can indicate that there's a call, and whoever's on the volunteer squad can indicate that they're coming back, and it starts broadcasting their location. So whoever's on command onsite can see how many people are coming and what their ETA is. One of the key points that's been made about this software is that if we ever do have a real emergency, you're using the same software for situational awareness that you use every day for handling roads issues, so it's going to be quite familiar to you and easy to use. So the last piece of the report is, is in the resolution, is that we intend to hand out the decommissioned paramedics laptops to the local municipal fire departments in support of this program, so they can use them in their trucks and on scene.
Well, thank you for that. Question I just had on, and then I'll take questions. You're sending them out to each of the local fire departments, which I think is great. You're said, you said there's no software as part of the package, so is there, let's say, a source that you would recommend that they, they take, or is there a way that we could send it out with a sort of a, a standardized software system for all the fire services in Gray County?
My assumption is that their local IT departments will want to do the configuration on them, especially if they're going to touch local networks. But if there's any questions or if we can offer any support, then we'd certainly be happy to have those conversations.
Well, some municipalities are small enough that they don't have the luxury of having in-house IT, but anyhow, that's, that's a good answer. The other thing is, I'm sitting, having breakfast, and is there, is there a button I can push if I call up Gray County to access this wonderful map?
These maps are available on our corporate website.
But how do I find?
You can just find them at gray.ca. If you look for GIS, they're some of the, I think, the, some of the top links on our, on our page, so.
All right. I've just been through an election where someone decided later on to put a button on the, on the system, so for quick access, so. Is it right there?
Right there.
All right. As long as, you know, public are aware of, of the access point on it, that was concerned. Questions? Thanks for that. Counselor Fosker.
Thank you, Ms. Warden. This is great. You mentioned public input in what, reporting something?
So the Waze portion of the, let me just open it up here. So the Waze layers that are connected here are available for, it's an application I would download onto your phone. It's like I said, it's more informative, it's not authoritative, so any of these points here are Waze submitted points, so they're public.
Fifty bucks, no.
They do depend, so you have to have people have agreed to it before you show them that, and they aren't displayed to the public, they're only internal for our information purposes. So for example, if I scroll over to control, I'm sure they'll be more reported. You can see ones such as this one that says new traffic control signal at this intersection. So that might not be reported by the municipality within the system, or they may not be on a similar system. So having the ability to at least see what the public is posting is a nice addition, but by no means authoritative.
So the reason that I ask is the one instance that I can think of that I know firsthand it would have been relevant is we had an extreme weather event and big giant tree right across the road just happened. So how does that information make it to the individuals who don't know that they're not going to be able to get through? Is this going to serve a purpose where individuals will increasingly be aware that they can and should report such things? Would they contact the municipality? How do you see that playing out?
So if the issue was posed by the municipality within the system, it does automatically request Google Maps, so anybody navigating through the region would be automatically escorted around it. So if they were saying, I think it was Gray Road 4, the tree fell?
No, but this was a while ago.
Oh, there was one recently where a tree fell. And if it's in Municipal 511, the system does push up closures directly to Google Maps. So if you're navigating through the region using Google Maps or Apple Maps or even Comtom, that all have those live connections, it will do its best to route you around it. As far as the public reporting separate issues, they can do it through Waze, but it's not, it doesn't automatically go into the system because it's not authoritative. So we don't, you know, there might be malicious intent there, so we want to have it for information for us to view, so if we get a whole bunch of reports of a car blocking the road, you are sending a patroler out if they're in the area, but it's not something that we're going to say immediately that just because the public has said it, it's 100% true right away.
So is the best approach to notify the municipality?
Uh, yeah.
And when that changes, will notify people not to notify somebody else?
Well, the.
Like, I understand that, you know, you got to start somewhere and this, it's very good. I just, these are questions that come up, and, you know, it's midnight and there's a tree, and who are you going to call?
For you, Mr. Warden, the, the normal processes would still apply. If there's issues on the roads that belong to the municipality, then that has to be contacted. Ideally, the municipalities would get on board and, and input the system as well or update the system, so that would be logged and it would be visible on the map. As far as, you know, identifying and addressing the problem, that procedure really can't change.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor McKee, then we'll.
Thank you. Just a question, and I think this is going to be great information, but the information is only as good as the amount of people putting it in and the accuracy of it. Gray County Road Superintendent's Association been provided with this presentation, and if they have, how many are on board for, as well as the fire departments? Because, you know, sometimes you live a fire, and especially in the wintertime in a rural area, or, you know, a place that doesn't have water and sewer, you'll have the road blocked off with the tank that's supplying the firefighter. So I'm just wondering if we've, if you've been able to present this to the different municipalities through the Gray County Road Association?
Good question.
Yeah, I've presented this to every municipality, either at the roads department level or if they have roads staff that work in the office. I've also presented to every fire department within the county. Most of them are on board so far and actively using it. There are a few that we're still working with to figure out the process by which they're going to update.
Thanks for that. Any other questions? Yes, Counselor Mackey.
Would we be able to find out whether our municipality is actively working with you?
For you, Mr. Warden, I'm sure, yes, you could.
A sidebar, but yes.
No, it's wonderful.
We're the last to know sometimes.
It's wonderful. We just, I'm not sure that we've seen it at our local table, and I'd be curious to see whether. whether our Roads Department or Fire Department are.
Like you, I agree.
Sign up.
Thank you.
If I may add to that, Chatsworth being one of the municipalities that give us the GIS contract, we've always had a great relationship with the Roads Department there, and have implemented similar technologies for managing compliance on the roads and tracking the plows and trucks as well. So I'm pretty sure Chatsworth is quite, quite adamant about getting on board, so.
Okay. There you are. Yes, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Well, I'm certainly glad to hear that. Jody, you'd mentioned Track My Plough in your, earlier on in your conversation. Can you just expand on that? Is that something that each municipality, you know, through your GIS, a public could, you know, look, look at to find out, you know, how many hours ago that, you know, concession five was our last plowed?
For you, Mr. Ward, there are basically three systems that track plow data. There are active systems, so those are the plows and trucks that have a GIS that's broadcasting to some central location all the time. A few of the municipalities here use them, and we don't. So basically, if you're using that, you can, anyone, if you, if you make that data public, can see where a plow is. We have a passive system, so the plows are tracked, but the data is not sent back here until the plow returns to its Home Depot. And then the third system is, it's basically an add-on. It's what the province uses. So the province has essentially a ruggedized phone that has a GPS data, GPS capability in it and a data plan, and it's mounted on the dashboard. So it's taking pictures and recording the location and broadcasting that live. As far as I know, it's separate from the automatic vehicle location that they're using to maintain GPS records for their plows. So those are the three systems. Like I say, ours is passive, and I think there's two maybe in the municipality that use real-time data.
Thank you. Well, it's an evolving discipline, but it's exciting to see it happening, so. Any other questions? All right. Call, call the motion, all in favor? That motion is carried. Thank you. Jody, we'll take, you can take a break. Thank you, everybody, for that presentation. And next up is Yacinda with her presentation. I know she's got some other projects that she's working on this morning. So welcome, Yacinda. Did we catch you off guard? No, you're ready.
Out of here.
Ah, there you are. Okay. Welcome. It's a little past 10:30, but hopefully you can work with us.
Good morning, and thank you for giving me the time to speak to you about the New to Gray initiative. Can you hear me okay? So my apologies, I was downstairs with another workshop, which is part of this presentation, so that's great. I just want to give kind of a brief background. I know that as, as members of council, that some of these topics or challenges are quite familiar to you. So in Gray County, we do have, we are struggling to fill the positions that we have. We have businesses that are expanding, and they're struggling to find a quality workforce. In fact, through the Employer One survey, 75% of employers identified the quality of workforce as fair to poor, which is just over 10% higher than last year. Our 28% of population is above 65, and we do have a low unemployment rate, which makes it difficult to find new bodies to fill those positions. And we have less than 2% population growth. So over the past four years, we had just over 20,000 people come into Gray County, and then we had, in that same time, we had 18,652 people leave the area. So that's quite a drop. So it really emphasizes the need to focus on retention. At the same time, we have, as I mentioned, businesses growing, but we also have newcomers that are looking to move to rural communities. And not just newcomers, but let's say urban dwellers, they're looking to start their life in a rural community. So there's more individuals that are looking to move to a place like, let's say, Gray County. So can we look at newcomers as a possibility to address that challenge, those challenges, and fill some of those positions? So on October 30th, 2017, we were successful in a grant that we applied for through the Ministry of Citizenship and Immigration, and we started New to Gray. So I just wanted to give a quick recap as to what New to Gray is. So, and it will be finished at the end of December, which is why I'm here in front of you, to kind of give you an overview. So we did an environmental scan to see what the situation was like, what the challenges were, what our strengths were, and so on. We did a lot of outreach and awareness to kind of identify the fact that we, we can encourage newcomers to come to our region, and what some of those, you know, the diversity that already exists in our, in our region. And then we did some familiarization tours. That was part of it. I'll talk a little more about that. Again, the need to enforce and encourage partnerships for sustainability, and then toolkit and resources. So part of the New to Gray is creating some, a toolkit for kind of action items for employers, municipalities, and community members like service providers, and also for newcomers as well. So without getting into too much detail on immigration to Canada, I put this slide up because I think it's important. So this slide shows permanent residents. Now, I'll say that temporary residents, temporary residents focuses on temporary foreign workers, international students, seasonal agricultural workers, and live-in, live-in nannies, live-in caregivers. So if we look at, so those ones, those temporary residents are determined by the other employment or other factors, and it is temporary. Now, looking at permanent residents to Gray County, 1980 to 2016, this information is from the census. I want you to focus on economic class. So in order to come through to Canada through the economic class, you gain a number of different points according to your language, your ability to speak English, or possibly French, depends where you're migrating to, immigrating to. So language, skills, education, and finances. So look at the numbers compared to the numbers that focus on refugees or the humanitarian stream. So economic class has a number of different avenues to come to Canada, but they are quite high. And then family sponsored essentially is someone is already here and has been here for a number of, whether it's at least 12 months or more, almost three years, depends on the category they came in. And that means they have that family support network already established, and they've already ideally integrated into the community. So the numbers of newcomers that come to our area usually come with education, skills, language, and often finances. So I just wanted to, you know, kind of highlight that. So some of the challenges in the environmental scan, we saw some of these, these are some of the challenges that stood out. Housing, housing. Services as well are the services that we have, addressing the unique needs of newcomers to our region. Community, are there different familiar ethnic communities that exist within Gray County? And there aren't that many. Transportation is always an ongoing issue, and luckily, we have some great staff that are, that are looking to address that challenge. And childcare, we're short on childcare, and I was, I just mentioned from an HR group that one of the biggest challenges is shift work. So people that have shift work and being able to access childcare. And then, where is Gray County? I often get, where is that when I say I live in Owen Sound, or I'm from Gray County? So that's quite common. How do we get us on the map? Housing. Kickoff event. So realizing that retention was a key component to attracting newcomers, we launched our New to Gray initiative. And we, we wanted to highlight the diversity that already exists because retention strategy is really important when you're going, when you're looking to attract new people. So we shared some different ethnic food. We met some people that you, that probably have never been to some of these functions before, and we had a really great speaker come, Lina LaRosa, talked about cross-cultural communication within the workplace. So some of the outcomes, the newcomers that were present were able to build some of their social capital, which is really important in integration and settlement. Newcomers felt supported and heard, which is, again, really important for someone to want to stay in this community and be an active member of the community. And then we, you know, we really set that foundation for a welcoming community. Housing. So familiarization tour and opportunities. We did a familiarization tour with our partners, the Rural Employment Initiative, and we brought just over 30 people to our area, and we gave them a tour of Gray County as, as well as we could in that one day. We introduced them to different employers. They participated in the job fair, and they were also greeted by a number of our service providers during our lunch to let them know the different services that exist. The feeling at the end of the day, it was a really long day, but at the end of the day, on the bus, they were very excited, and they were very encouraged, and they felt like Gray County could be their home. The biggest challenge that they had mentioned was transportation. But when I asked just a, kind of a quick hands up, if you would consider living in this area, I said, "You can tell me the truth. I'm not going to hold it against you, but raise your hand if you feel that you might move to Gray County if you had the right job in place." And all of them, except three people, raised their hand, and the three people were transportation, depending on their family member, and I think it was another transportation issue. Housing. Partnerships and building capacity. So partnerships, I don't need to highlight how important partnerships are, but partnerships are really important in enabling us to sustain this, this momentum and this initiative forward. And some of the strong, strong partnerships that we've made through New to Gray are listed on here, and more specifically, the Rural Employment Initiative, which I'll just briefly touch on next, on the next slide. Or the next slide after this one. Making Gray's Home Project. I don't need to talk too much about it because I know that they stood in front of you and gave Gray a really great outline as their, as to their initiatives, as to their goals. But what I just wanted to highlight is this project is really amazing at connecting directly to newcomers, and then connecting newcomers to the services we have. They do focus on vulnerable newcomers, but a vulnerable newcomer could be an economic class person whose husband or spouse is working full-time, and the spouse is at home with not much of a social network and possibly a disability, and not able to integrate within the community. So it could be anyone. So this is the Rural Employment Initiative that I mentioned. So the Rural Employment Initiative is housed out of the Newcomers Centre of Peel. So their clients, they have hundreds of clients that are looking to move from the urban, like GTA, to a rural community. So the Rural Employment Initiative, which is the individuals in the green, so they are basically connecting with all the different counties who are looking to, to attract newcomers to the area. So we participated in a job fair on March 19th, and when I got home after being there, when I got home back to my email, I had about 30, 34 requests on information on wanting to move to Gray County. They wanted to know what jobs are available, what skills people are looking for, and what, what services were available. And there was another one upcoming on November 6th, which I will participate again in. I mentioned earlier, oh, housing. I mentioned earlier outreach and awareness. So diversity training. We did a number of different, we did a session in each municipality, and I thank the partners for participating in, in those, in those sessions. We also partnered with Making Gray's Home in running the Working with Newcomers session, which is currently happening downstairs. We've had just over 140 participants in our workshops, and it really brings to light the need to address the unique needs of newcomers, the need to have that unconscious bias, and to, to open our doors to, to new. Open our doors to new, really, is what it means. Presentations, I just wanted to highlight some of the different presentations that were done through New to Gray. AMO invited us to present this past year, which I thought went very well. We also have a MAFRA's Municipal Ag Plan Economic Development Forum. We're at New to Gray presented alongside with Huron County and Wellington County. And then we had the two job fairs. And we also had, we also had the Toronto, what's the newspaper called? The Toronto Sun and Times? No. Yes, sorry. The Toronto Star had participated in our, in our, in our tour and did a really, really amazing write-up that brought a lot of attention to Gray County. So all of this work has essentially led us to being successful in applying for a grant to a MAFRA through the Rural Economic Development Stream for grants. And we were successful in getting a grant to have a regional forum. Part of that regional forum is, is a partnership. So we're, it's not just Gray County, it's Gray County, Huron, Perth, Wellington, and Bruce Counties, County that have partnered together to deliver this forum. That forum essentially is looking at supporting employers and filling those positions, and also employers and the tools that they need to be able to attract and retain newcomers. And I'm sorry, I should have defined newcomers earlier. But when we started New to Gray, we define newcomers as anyone new to our region, whether they're coming from outside Canada, or they're coming from within Canada. So it could be someone who just has lived in GTA, urban setting, and moving to the rural community because it's a newcomer to our region. So that forum, I had put the poster at your desks at the last council meeting, and I hope you'll consider coming. I think it's really important to advocate the need to be able to support our employers and to solidify the partnerships that exist. Housing. So moving forward, housing, affordable and attainable housing, research initiatives. I just want to highlight, I wanted to highlight housing because it really is a huge challenge when it comes to attracting newcomers. Hey, come live here, but you don't have anywhere to stay. It's, it's, it needs to be done simultaneously, and I'm glad that it, you know, we have some great staff that have already initiated these, this momentum. And it needs to continue, and it needs to be at the, kind of the top of the agenda. Partnerships, again, always. It's really important, and as community leaders, being able to emphasize a strong partnership with employers that are in our region. I'd just like to do one little anecdote, anecdotal story, if you wouldn't mind. So Scott Taylor, who's our senior planner here at Gray County, had sent me an email the other week. He was at a conference in Sudbury, and there was a presentation on Globurbia, which was a study documentary done by a Ryerson professor about cultural enclaves around suburban areas of the GTA. They talked about it from a number of different aspects, including how a municipality could best serve such communities from a public, a public service perspective. When it came down, when it came time for the question and answer session, our senior planner, Scott Taylor, asked about their opinions on such enclaves in rural or small urban environments. For example, with, i.e. slower population growth in parts of the province, what can we do to help make ourselves ready for different cultures and new Canadians? The answer he got back from the moderator was that, quote, "His question was very topical, and that he should talk to Gray County as they've got a great person exploring a great program." That wasn't on purpose, just so you know. A great program exploring this very issue. So, you know, the moderator had, moderator had apparently been at a presentation at AMO on this topic, and was quite impressed by Gray County. So Gray County is making an impression well beyond our borders. And lastly, I just want to say that as a newcomer to this area, having moved here in 2014, four years ago, I, I continue, I continue to be impressed and encouraged, both in this role and my role at Launchpad as the Executive Director, by the leadership and open-mindedness of this council. Thank you for supporting this initiative and anticipating the needs of our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Yacinda. That's great. You did a great job. And any, anybody have any questions? John?
Thank you. I guess that when, by seeing, along with the focus on housing, there's also been the focus on the, on the rural. Rural means a lot of different things to different people. Like, I have people in Laura Bay and Craig Leith say that they live in a rural environment. That's not the rural environment that I live in. And so I think that one of the things that we need to do is, is to kind of nail down, what does newcomers consider to be rural? Like, if it's the city of Owen Sound on the outskirts, or Craig Leith, and that's one thing. If you're talking about, you know, some of the more far-reaching regions in Gray County, then that's a whole different model because... then that's a whole different model because in all of this, you know, housing is one thing in my view, we've had this discussion at Blue Mountain a lot, is that it doesn't, you can build the houses, it still might not be the right place because people that are in this economic bracket need to be close to transit and they also need to be close to shopping that's, you know, that's affordable as well. And most, for the most part, that occurs in big box stores. So I think that, you know, when you're taking a look at affordable and attainable housing in Gray County, we have to look at where all those amenities are and we can't be putting these things out in rural places where, you know, our infrastructure is going to be really stretched. Like if it's one thing if you put one of these in an already existing bus route, but if you put them out and then you have to create the bus route and buy the bus, that's, that's going to really drive the price of it up to, you know, where the taxpayers of the whole of Gray County might not be able to afford it. So anytime we're talking about this, I think we need to nail down what does rural mean to these people? And also where do we, where are the corridors that we already have a lot of these services provided so that it doesn't put a great big strain on the taxpayers? That's just a comment. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Ian, you had some comments?
Thank you. Just, Senator, I don't know, you didn't say much about housing? You didn't mention it much?
I know.
Just wondering, do you have an opinion on it? What type of, what type of housing do we need in your opinion? I was having a conversation with somebody that, how do you describe in 2018 a wartime bungalow neighborhood? Like we don't have those anymore. Well, we do, but we don't have any new ones. We built ninety-one new houses in 2017, I think in Owen Sound, and they're all five-fifty, six-hundred, six-fifty, seven-hundred probably, which isn't quite what we're looking for. I don't think.
So I thought you might ask that question and my first reaction was to pass the buck over here to these professionals. But what I will say is that I think that partnership is really important because I know that the recommendations from the South Georgian Bay Initiative talks about getting more people involved and what that looks like. So, you know, developers and municipalities and employers and so on. I think that is really important to be able to see what the different needs are. But also I think that there's a lot of housing that exists already, empty houses and empty rooms that exist already. And I think those, that there is definitely a perception, a public perception, I guess a public perception that it's not something that people really want to do. They don't really want to rent out their home or make it accessible to other people if they're not living there, if it's seasonal and so on. That's too complicated. I personally, we have a room and we do invite international students, so we always have an international student in our house. But it's that educational piece that they're putting, that I spoke into Randy about in promoting, building the awareness of different types of housing. It doesn't have to be your traditional home, doesn't have to be what developers are doing, but sometimes it already exists in our backyard.
Probably in my neighborhood, we probably got sixty empty bedrooms in twenty houses.
Yeah, and then-
Single people living in the two and three and four-bedroom houses.
Yes, yes. And demographics show that, what, twenty-eight percent are sixty-five plus? How do we support those individuals who have a house with four empty bedrooms or two empty bedrooms to open up their doors and what are the resources they need to be able to do so?
Thank you for that. Randy, do you have any comments? Just-
Sorry, Randy?
Just answered it quite well and I think that's, that's the key is, is we need to offer up different, different types and forms of housing, whether it be, you know, matching up folks that have some empty beds that they can, they're willing to provide as at least a transitional accommodation right through to rentals, right through to hopefully where they can purchase a, purchase a home that's at an attainable rate. So it's, it's looking at the whole spectrum in terms of different housing types and working with developers and existing homeowners to include things like second units in their homes and other things. So, so it's, it's a gamut of options. I think this is the end solution so that people can, can choose where they're at and their, and their stage of coming to Gray. They can, they can transition from one housing type to another, to ultimately hopefully the goal of owning a home one day.
And if I can just highlight, Warden, that, you know, just by moving in, let's say as that example with those empty bedrooms, just by moving into someone's home, you've already created a connection, you've already created that integration, that settlement support that, that may get people to want to stay. The person that lives in that house is essentially a resource to know what services and what connections and what events are already going on, so.
Thank you for that. Any other questions, comments? Counselor Fosbrook, then Counselor Ardell.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you very much for the information. Earlier, there was an earlier slide, I'm not sure if it was the third or the fourth, you talked about, it was the one with the initial numbers and you mentioned temporary?
Yep.
If we could go back to that. But at the top it says permanent residents to Gray County.
Yes, so I-
The economic class, temporary or permanent?
So temporary residents are not indicated on here at all. I just wanted to highlight that you are either a permanent resident or a temporary resident. And those temporary foreign workers, seasonal agricultural workers, that they are separate and their staying here depends on whether they have employment, application process, and it is temporary. These individuals are staying, they're landed immigrants, they're here as permanent residents permanently. They don't have to apply for citizenship unless they want to. They don't have to reapply every one year, two years, depending on a employer. So those are permanent. So they're, I don't have the temporary resident numbers here. I probably couldn't find them.
So thank you for clarifying that. So what, so I'm looking at the New to Gray webpage right now.
Okay.
Where can somebody view the source documents that feed these statistics?
Uh-
Like you mentioned the Employer One Survey and Environmental Scan.
So the, we, I gathered information from the Census and Employer One Survey. Employer One Survey did an immigrant trend, immigration trends to our region, that's on their website. But actually, that's a good idea to be able to put those on, those resources on the New to Gray. I can let you know where they are if you're looking for them specifically.
I'm all about, if you're going to share with me, share with everybody. So if you could link that, I think that would be great.
Yeah, sure.
Click-ons.
And furthermore, like I recall vividly at the beginning of this term of council, we were having discussions about how we lacked jobs. And then we went to, we don't have enough bodies for jobs. And we, our council has seen information left here for us from the Four County Labor Board, but I don't recall ever seeing a delegation from the Labor Board. And I'm just, I'm trying to reconcile, do we really have a grasp on what the numbers are and what's driving them? Like what's the source information? So you talked about the Census. I would really like to see some source information because I have concerns that, you know, on the one hand, we're talking about newcomers, that's great. But at the same time, we have youth living in our community that, are we going to usurp them by individuals who are prepared to work for less than what is a decent wage? There's a number of concerns that stem from this. So source information, I think, would be fair to everybody.
Uh, I, sorry.
To be clear, the, if you are on the New to Gray page, the link to the Employer One Survey is about two-thirds of the way down. That links you through to the Four County Labor Board site and all of the past survey results are all prominently displayed on that page.
On the Four County Board?
On the, yeah, it's, it's under reports, under Four County Labor Market Plan Board. I didn't realize it linked, so thank you.
They'll lift the hood.
Right on the first page.
Okay. Can I, can I, and I apologize, but I didn't, I didn't address the attraction retention campaign, which kind of answers your question, but also allows me to say what I forgot. So for, we have, so we have a regional forum that's happening and the Four County Labor Market Plan Board and Rural Ontario Institute will be presenting. And we're also doing an environmental scan and case study, which includes all five counties. So they're looking at, when you talk about numbers and what the situation is, the Rural Ontario Institute and Four County will be standing up in front of everyone to say what that situation is. So that's November 30th. And then, and I apologize, but all of this has led into the momentum that we've created to do attraction and retention campaign. And that is going to focus on, that's going to integrate what New to Gray did with focusing on newcomers, but include international students and youth within the campaign. So, so that is underway and that will start 2019, but that will be including not just newcomers, but attracting and retaining youth and international students.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Yuzena. You've certainly got a lot of information and thanks for consolidating it today in this report. Is, Gail, you have some comments?
Yes, I do, thank you, and thank you, Lucinda. I guess my question would be to Randy and it's about the rental housing stock. I think that's what's required for these, you know, people coming into our area to work. We don't have enough rental. There, you know, there's a developer in Collingwood that everybody thought that they could rent at this new rental place, but now the, it's going to be unaffordable to rent there even because the rentals are going to be anywhere between fifteen hundred and two thousand a month for a one-bedroom. That is unaffordable. That's for our professionals coming, moving here. But what about rentals? And as soon as you start talking about, I know that developers need the density, but as soon as you start saying, "I'm going to build a five-story rental," the NIMBY-ism comes out and that nobody wants it in their backyards. So when now you're talking about, and I guess I'll put my farmer hat on, so, you know, with this new type of planting that's going to be happening all over in our area, hopefully people are, you know, the farmers are going to get on board with this new type of planting, we're going to be bringing up more foreign seasonal workers to harvest our crops. So can we put a five-story rental building somewhere in the rural area so that we don't get penalized by, with DCs and putting up more bunkhouses? So you've got bunkhouses scattered all over and then in the wintertime, you can't use them for anything else, so they're left sitting for six months of the year. Can we start putting some high-rise buildings up now to support the agricultural industry? Because we are huge here.
Thanks for bringing that up, Gail. I think, we can't solve it here today, but I think everybody's listening and we understand that. I think the highlight today is attainable housing is certainly on everybody's radar and solutions, because it's on everybody's radar, I think solutions will evolve. So I thank Yuzena for her, for her good works today and unless there's another question, we'll, we'll take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to be back up again in a minute. Okay. The next is that report, ITR CWO 518 regarding document management software licensing be received and that council acknowledges that a two-year agreement with App novation Technologies, Alfresco licensing is required and staff be directed to move forward with this purchase as approved by the Chief Administrative Officer in, in accordance with Sections 1 and 2 of Bylaw 502-18, 5029-18 being the lame duck bylaw. Jody, do you want to?
I need a moment, Senator.
Burley and Echols. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll be as brief as I can with this while still being relevant. So just a little bit of background on what an electronic document management system is or electronic document and record management system. So traditionally, using a computer, you just store your files on the local drive or if you're big like us, on a, on a network. And somewhere is along the lines, somebody invented this great software, which we abbreviate as EDRMS. And basically what it allows you to do is manage all the content that you're creating or receiving. And some of the controls that you can put in place, you can put fine grain control on who can access your sensitive documents so you have relevant permissions by department or the sensitivity of the material. You get version control for the documents that you're working on. Generally, that reduces your file space depending on how you're managing those documents and certainly the requirements for the backups because you do have that, that version history. And one of the most important things for an organization like us is that when you do complete a document, then you can mark it as complete and as a record and that puts it into our county records retention schedule essentially. We currently have 300,000 current and archive records in our system. In 2016, we switched the, the document management system that we were using to a product called Alfresco. We signed a two-year agreement for that product and it is now up for renewal. And just one more piece about that, for us in IT, it's, it's not just a, you know, an application where you stick your, your files and manage them that way. It's essentially a platform that we can use to develop other, other applications or integrations with things like our websites. So some of the other uses we make of it, it's essentially driving how we create and distribute the council minutes and packages, whether through the website or through the council portal. We use it for another tool, which is essentially the prioritization of IT projects so people can create a document, they can put some metadata on that document and then we can more or less discuss it in terms of projects and see it as lists and status, whether they're draft or completed or whatnot. And we're also looking at building better tools for managing specific types of documents like our policies or our agreements. So that, that renewal is due this year or the end of this year. It's a two-year term. It's increased by four percent over the last two-year term, so it's approximately $102,000 a year. That's it.
Thank you for that. Any questions to Jody on the Alfresco? Doesn't seem to be any questions at the time. Thank you very much for that presentation. Call the motion, all in favor? Thank you very much. Jody, you're still up with the Terranet Data Delivery System. That report, ITR CWO 618 regarding Terranet Data Delivery Be Received and that council acknowledges that a five-year agreement with Terranet for parcel ownership and land information data delivery is required and staff be directed to move forward with this purchase as approved by the Chief Administrative Officer in, in accordance with Sections 1, 2 of Bylaw 5029-18 being the lame duck bylaw. Jody, put on the floor, Counselor Barfoot, Counselor Bell. Thank you.
Thank you. So another contract extension essentially, so again, I'll be brief. Ontario Parcel was formed, I think in the early 2000s and it's basically overseen by the province. MPAC collects attributes about parcels such as ownership information, assessed value, structures or anything that goes into the assessed values. And that's all tied to a spatial mapping product, which is provided by Terranet Inc. So Terranet essentially provides two mapping products as far as we're concerned. There is a parcel fabric that is tied to assessed parcels and there's a separate one that's tied to ownership information or the pins, which is, I presume, what you see on your tax returns. We, what we're paying for with this agreement is an up-to-date delivery of those two data sets. So they, if anything is registered at the land registry office, they're meant to receive or their service level says that they will receive that change within 24 hours and they'll deliver that change to their clients within a total of 48 hours from the time it hits the LRO. So this is really meant to give us the most up-to-date information on assessment roll number or assessment parcel fabrics and the ownership fabric. We also get from them a, an update of any new registered plans of survey. So how we use this data, we use it a lot when we're making custom mapping products, but we also expose it back through our web applications, both to the public for that information that we're allowed to show, which really drives a lot of, not just parcel research, but also the ability for us to create tools to even find the parcels are all driven by that spatial data. And then, like I say, the information we're allowed to show, such as assessed value or structure information. Internally, we use it to do a lot of research for planning applications. We have a link, so if you don't, if you only know the assessment roll number or the pin, you can find the location and see both sets of value or anything that's associated with either one of those products. And you can click on a parcel and you can see any registered plans of survey that are associated and get a copy of those. That is available to anyone who can access those sites at any of the municipalities as well. It is fairly important to have up-to-date information on these two products if we are required, again, at the county level or at- again, at the county level or at the lower-tier municipal level to create mail-out notifications for planning applications, it's our GIS that's driving the creation of mailing labels to, to mail to the correct residents. And that more or less does it by, you identify a property, you create a buffer that's usually 120 meters, it's spelled out in, in sort of the planning rules and it collects all the parcels that intersects that and generates mailing labels. Also, if we're getting any new planning applications that are tied to new, new parcels, it's important that, that we have the latest information. So this is a five-year renewal. The original term was five years. There is a slightly more than average increase, which more, I think it's 11%, and that more or less reflects the fact that we've expanded our, our parcel count essentially. So there are a few areas where we go outside the border of Gray County. So we can provide parcel and address information to the, to the fire departments that either serve those areas and neighboring counties or neighboring counties that come into Gray County for, for fire services. That's it.
Thank you. Another great service. Any questions on Terranet? Council Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you, Jody. MPAC, is this, so, so Gray County gets this data and is this also shared with the lower tier or do we have to have our own agreements?
Through you, Mr. Warden. So we, the MPAC data is available to the lower-tier municipality. Essentially, it's restricted to your own municipality. The Terranet data is available to them as well, but the arrangement is sub-licensing under the county of Gray. So they have to follow the same terms, but we are responsible at the county level for managing that agreement with the, with the municipality.
Okay. So to paraphrase, we, we, we as lower tiers get to share in the data?
Yeah. To paraphrase, lower-tier municipalities get access to the same data that the county staff do through our, through the private or the, the private access GIS that we stand up. They are able to get copies of the data for use internally and they are allowed to share that data to contractors for use on their own projects. So the rules are essentially the same, county and lower-tier municipalities.
So the reason that I ask is because if the lower tiers have any concerns with the quality of data that they're getting from MPAC, do they raise their hand directly to MPAC or is that something that we should vet through the county as the primary purchaser, if you will?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Those concerns would go through MPAC.
Okay.
I'll spare you the detail on the concerns, but it's recently election-related, Mr. Warden.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I understand. But anyhow, that's, that's great. It's, it's really, having followed the computerization of the world for many, many years, it's, you know, these are, these are marvelous tools that we have today. Any other questions? Thank you. Call the motion. All in favor of accepting Terranet? Thank you very much, Jody. Great presentations. Good showcase for IT today. Thank you very much. Okay. The next item is from the capital purchases department and that report TRCW-48-18 be received and that staff be authorized to issue the tender for two tandem trucks and two tandem rolloff trucks prior to the 2019 budget approval due to delivery time constraints in accordance with section 3.3c of the purchasing procedure, which allows the procurement of up to 50% of the gross expenditures in one year of the 10-year capital forecast. Put that on the floor. Council Greenfield, Council Echols, Pat, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, we, we've taken a report similar to this many times, looking to order trucks ahead of the final budget approval, just in order that we get them for next fall. So in our 10-year plan, it was originally calling for four tandem trucks and replacement of two five-ton single-axle trucks. So during discussions with the fleet management group in our, in our fleet meeting, we started talking about the newer rolloff trucks, which we think are much more versatile for our operations. The, the two five-ton trucks that we use for liquid applications are not that heavily used. So this box, I'm going to show a video here. This type of truck and rolloff box, this style is our preferred. We will accept an equivalent. This is a specific manufacturer's vehicle, but we will accept equivalents. So we're going to be tendering, we're hoping to tender for this type of vehicle.
Let's go play here. Is that lasting? Oh. Sorry. There. Chiding.
Out here, it's never the same day twice. Plan A quickly becomes Plan B and then C. All that matters is your ability to adapt. Because out here, there's only one thing you can do. Roll with it. Introducing the first of its kind municipal rolloff truck from Vikings of Ace. The first ever rolloff snowplow truck with 40,000 pound capacity you can load, fully loaded. Say hello to the Vikings of Ace Roller Pro. The new standard for maximum versatility and true year-round multitasking. For road departments with a growing to-do list and shrinking budget, the Vikings of Ace Roller Pro gets it all done. Replacing up to five dedicated trucks, the Roller Pro gives road crews all the right tools for every season. At 60% less capital required and 80% savings in maintenance. For snow and ice control, the tried and true Vikings of Ace Sand Hopper and Salt Spreader Package is ready for duty. Both front and rear discharge hoppers are available. Slide on the 2,600 gallon direct liquid application tank and you're instantly ready for spraying down salt grime. The same tank can be doubled up for street flushing, bridge washing, dust control, and even plant watering. Moving equipment, the Roller Pro's 16-foot flatbed provides smooth logistics, featuring on-the-ground loading and up to 40,000 pounds. Hauling and dumping is also easy with the Roller Pro's all-purpose 14.9 cubic yard heavy-duty Cleaning up, the Roller Pro's dumpster body can be dropped on site, filled with open doors and reloaded at maximum capacity. Ideal for municipal work, the Roller Pro is both traffic-friendly and designed for safety. Simple but secure, the front rear mechanical safety locks eliminate any chain requirements. And thanks to the extendable tail, the compact frame allows the Roller Pro to breeze through tight turns. The low-frame design also has greater stability with a lower center of crack. The Roller Pro by Vikings of Ace. Five trucks in one, less equipment maintenance, and true year-round multitasking. The new standard in municipal truck versatility is here. And it's ready to roll.
Wow. Hey, that's great.
Yeah. So why aren't we buying 200 of them? That's so convincing, that video. But anyway.
Got to have it.
So we were, I'm kind of taken back by that video. You might see all Ayton in there. For those of you in, familiar with Ayton Patrol and some of Gray Road Three in there. So they did film it at, at our depot. So we've seen it in action and the guys are, you know, very impressed and just the variability and the versatility of the item is, is pretty interesting. So we were going to get four attachments, the dump box, the tank, the flatbed. The, the best part about the flatbed is we can float stuff around without needing a special, you don't need your AZ, you only need a DZ for that float. So we think it'd be nice for floating the skid steer and all that stuff around. And then the solid hopper we're going to be getting. Right now, we're not getting the dump, like the dumpster, the straight dumpster. We might eventually, right now, we can use the dump box. If the bridge crew was doing something, we could just leave the dump box there. They could fill it with whatever concrete they needed to and then we could still take the dump box away. So we're just, we're not really using the straight dumpster with the swing outdoors yet. Another thing in the report, just on page 37, the steel versus stainless versus aluminum discussion. I know this committee and Mayor Pringle had talked a few years ago about trying the stainless and aluminum. We've been doing that for the last two years. We're very happy with both of them actually, especially the stainless. The aluminum seems a little light in certain situations. Some have had problems with the aluminum trucks. We haven't. But we're much more convinced that stainless steel is the way to go. So we're looking for stainless with the new tandems. And so generally, we're replacing what it will be was, is four tandems and the two five tons with two tandems and two of these newer rolloff trucks. So it's about $3,000, $3,053 more, but it reduces our fleet by two, which will save on maintenance moving forward. So we kind of think it's a win-win for us. So we're looking to put our tender to purchase these early.
Thanks for that. Any questions on the purchases? Yes, John, how are you?
Thanks. And thanks, Pat. I think, I think they're very, they are very impressive. You know, they know the contractor's been using them, some variation of this for quite a while. I guess I have to have a couple of questions. Because of the double frame and all the other hosing and stuff, how much payload do we figure we're going to be losing on, on each unit as far as hauling? And the other thing is, when I took a look at the video and having recent experience with this, moving a tractor on top of one of these things, you know, we're restricted by height to 13 and a half feet. So I'm just wondering, we weren't planning on getting rid of our drop goose necks and stuff for moving like the back hose and any of that bigger equipment, I would hope, because we're going to run into some problems with height if, if we were. So I just wondered if you could comment on that?
As far as the payload, I know our maintenance staff and Marty are comfortable that we can carry enough to complete all our routes as per our current tandems. But we know there is some height issues. It will depend a bit on the piece of equipment we're carrying. We know what the height of, you know, our, what we can get through as far as our hydro lines and that type of thing. So there might be some machine that we may not carry someday, but generally, we think it'll do most of the things that we need.
Yes, John.
So we're, it's, it's staff's thought that we're not going to get rid of the drop goose necks on the tractors for some of the stuff. Is that, am I correct in saying that or?
Yeah. No, we aren't going to get rid of any of that stuff, no.
Solutions in hand. All right. Any other questions? Johnny, you're satisfied with?
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Okay, good. I'm over. Who?
Is Marty at the back?
Marty?
Yes.
Everything's cool? All right. Okay. I know Scott was, you have a question, Scott?
Someone stood up back in the back. I thought wanted to maybe comment on Graham.
Just Graham's here and accounted for and is the master schemer here.
I just wanted to make a comment that the, the tractors and the goose neck trailer that you mentioned, we don't have those anymore. So when we got into the construction, those went and so we don't have that type of trailer anymore.
Oh, okay. Yes, Council Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So the most current fleet report information, is that what's in the asset management plan right now?
Yes, it's the 10-year capital that we do every.
And that information hasn't been updated, has it been updated since 2016?
Updated with the 10-year capital every spring.
Okay.
So in 18, May 18, it was updated.
And so do we assign an actual fleet number to every unit?
Yes. In fact, finance goes through and does a total life cycle for every, every item in our fleet. And that's how they come up with charge-out rates. So the way the fleet works is we pay into a reserve for a charge-out rate, say if it was $50 an hour to drive whatever truck it is we were operating.
And then eventually that pays for replacement of all our vehicles.
So it just, that's why we're always taking them in reserve for the fleet. It's not really, I mean, levy is going in there, but it's kind of pulling out of reserve in the ongoing to fund our fleet.
So if I wanted to reconcile the units that you're taking out of the fleet with the asset management plan, what are the fleet numbers that we're replacing?
The actual, like, equipment piece numbers?
I think that's, I think Pat can get you that kind of information, but we're not going to.
I mean, I go to the discussion all the time where they say, we're replacing, you know, Marty will say, I'm replacing unit 308. Well, that doesn't mean any, I don't know what unit 308 is, right? All the guys do. But yeah, we have all those, you know, we usually describe it typically in the 10-year plan quite frequently as, that's the type of equipment. Those guys get a little more specific in the actual number of that piece of equipment. But we could get whatever you need. I mean, it's pretty straightforward.
I'm just trying to reconcile with the one place I can go to for fleet information and that is the asset management plan.
The 10-year capital is, yes, we're all.
Okay. Thank you.
We don't show anything beyond our 10-year. I mean, you could show, you know, show longer, I guess, if you had to, but.
Thank you.
Pat, the, you're going to be putting six units out for, let's say, for sale, I guess, essentially. Are all the lower tiers beta aware currently of these purchases?
Yes.
That could be, yeah. Yes, Kevin?
Just on my comment though, it's going to take us nine or 10 months before we have this further ready.
Oh, I understand that.
So when, when we do get, that will happen and it'll be communicated. And I know they brought these vehicles to the sites and actually allowed, allowed these products kind of view them, et cetera.
Oh, so there's already been a pre-sale?
No, nothing. We're ready to do.
Oh, okay. Right.
That happens. So that, that happened.
I know Greyhounds was pleased to get one of the, the graders that came up and they're well-maintained products. So anything else? Okay. Call the motion. All in favor? Thank you very much on that. So you're up still with that report, TRCW4218 regarding updates to minimum maintenance standards be received and that maintenance standards and transportation services protocol be updated in the Gray County Winter Control Operator Handbook and that a bylaw be brought forward for council's consideration. Put that on the floor. Counselor McKeen, Counselor Mackey, McKean and Mackey. Okay. Graham, how are you?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. This report is fairly lengthy. The last two documents are actually the full Ontario regulation that relates to maintenance standards. And the, the front couple of pages, if I can kind of give you an overview, is just that there was a review of the minimum maintenance standards that dated back to late 2016. And we were consulted as well as all the other provincial municipalities. What the outcome of that was, was an amendment in May of 2018 that made some changes. So the highlights of those changes are, they've removed the word minimum. So now we're just working to a maintenance standard. And the, the next one is the ability of a municipality to declare a significant weather event. The, the other maintenance standard that changed was winter maintenance for bicycle lanes and winter maintenance standards for sidewalks. So our department would like to be able to declare a significant weather event if it was necessary and if it met the criteria that's set out in the report. So this information comes from the Environment Canada issuance of public weather warnings. And so the, the five points there are snow accumulation on roadways, on bicycle lanes, icy roadways, snow accumulation on sidewalks and icy sidewalks. We are looking at providing the same level of service that we always have. This isn't going to be a reduction in our level of service. But what it does is it gives a municipality the ability that if there was an extreme weather event, that we could declare a significant weather event. The director would be the person to declare it or his or her designate. And at that point in time, the munis- And at that point in time, the municipality would not be held to the same standards as in the current Regulation two thirty-nine. So, it gives us a bit of room with our liability and risk. So, the, during the significant weather event, the standard says that you shall monitor and deploy resources as you see fit, and that that would definitely continue unless we couldn't see out there and it was our staff, was, it was an unsafe situation, we would continue to do the best we could. When that event was starting to end and we could maintain up to that level again, up to the level of the maintenance standard, the director or his or her designate would then declare the event ended. Then the maintenance standards would apply again and, and we'd be back to normal operations. So, the way that we would push that information out to the public would be through the county website, social media, radio media, and municipality's police services. So, the public would know, our, our commuters would know, and this would be used in their planning to make a safe commute or, or travel on the county roads. Is there any questions about the significant weather event? Because I will move on to the bike lanes then if there isn't...
Doesn't appear to be, so...
Okay. So, the bike lane maintenance is, is something that we really feel that we just cannot meet the standard with our equipment, our staff resources, and we do have some designated bicycle lanes. We also have some paved shoulders that can be used as bike lanes. So, we've, we've addressed that in the bylaw, which is attached. We've noted the locations of the bike lanes, which is a definition that a, it's a delineated or marked bicycle lane. The paved shoulders is not defined in the maintenance standard, but because we do have some cycling routes and we do have some roads that we know are used by cyclists, we felt it was important to include that in the bylaw as well. So, we're asking that council would, or committee would, would approve that, that we would close those bike lanes and those paved shoulders for winter maintenance only, and that that would be defined in the winter season definition, and that we would give notice to the public through our, our website that that would be closed, those bike lanes would be closed.
Any questions on winter maintenance of bike lanes? Counselor McKean?
Thank you. Graham, this sounds pretty onerous to the bicycle community, but in actuality, any of the, the lanes or road widens that we have are plowed off into the ditch anyway. Are they, like, we don't stop it at the, we're not going to stop at that white line. And also, knowing that salt brine moves to the lower end of the road, they're going to get de-iced for the most part anyway. We're just not going to physically put the de-icing agent on there. Would I be correct in saying that?
So, John, your, what you said isn't incorrect. The only part of, of the standard that we can't meet is the application of materials. So, the brine, definitely, it will migrate to the shoulder and it will provide that, but we do not apply materials to those shoulders. So, we're meeting the standard when it comes to plowing, but when we're, we're applying materials, we don't apply directly to that bike lane. And that's what it says that, you know, within eight hours, you shall apply materials. That's the part we can't meet, yeah.
Thanks for that. Counselor Echols, you had some questions there.
So, is it going to be from the fifteenth, the first of November to the thirty-first of March?
It's October fifteenth to April fifteenth, I believe, Kevin.
Right.
It's in the bylaw.
But you look out there today, we look out there today, I guess that's where I'm going with this, obviously.
Okay.
Winter, okay, can't be on there. Somebody's on there, hits a small patch this morning. Matter of fact, I did see somebody that has been known to ride from the Blue Mountains was in the audience this morning. I don't think he rode his bike today. Hits a small patch of that black ice. Looks like everything's fine, but we haven't got it signed. Frank Cowan and company is fine with saying just on the website that those are not and that you're using that roadway or those bicycle lanes at your own risk?
Our consultation with our insurance provider and our legal is that we wouldn't necessarily have to sign each and every one. And part of that, when we had legal look at this bylaw, it was the amount of signs that we'd need to sign the paved shoulders as well as the bike lanes. That was the consideration in, in deciding not to sign those.
And if I could, I guess that's where we've seen on a personal basis at a lower tier, on our sidewalks, we're in West Gray, we're going to do this side, not that side. Ten years ago, we got into that, that's the way it'd been done for years and years. Ten years ago, we get into a lawsuit, somebody decided in the middle of February to walk on the other side, broke their ankle, and, yeah, I'll tell you, you know, it wasn't pleasant what the lawyers from the other side, oh, sorry, I don't mean to be abusive to lawyers again today around the circle, what ended up being, and we've ended up in West Gray for the last three years, on pretty much every sidewalk, Frank Cowan says, if it's not signed, then it's still open, and you're still open to a lawsuit if somebody's on it, whether it's got six feet of snow on it or not. So, that's why I'm just asking, and I don't know, maybe this would be a question for our first Director of Legal Services.
I don't think he's having a...
That is my, you know, as you said, there it is, here it is today, really, no, from here to here, you're not going to do it. But that was what Frank Cowan, the information they gave us, and that's why we've got all of these nice, lovely, black and white signs, sort of yellow and black signs...
Yellow, yellow. I see them all over on sidewalks. Not maintained, do not use, from here to here. Thank you for that, Kevin. That's something I think that we may have to consider. I'm not sure, but...
Graham, would it, or Pat, would it be best if we brought back the opinion that we had, both from the insurer and from legal? And we can defer this report, I think, for today and bring that information back to the next meeting, just to be really clear, and also to give Michael an opportunity to review the material, because he hasn't had that yet.
Yes.
Good.
We can certainly get a second opinion and provide the opinions to date, for sure.
I, no, I, I concur. I think Counselor Echols has a, has an interesting point. I have a problem in Greyhounds. We stop plowing at four o'clock, and no one knows, so, especially from those from out of town, so. Anyhow, good thing, maybe we'll make a motion to defer the approval of this report. You want to make that, Counselor?
I, I was going to make that.
Oh, Counselor Pringle, secondor, Counselor Echols, that we defer the approval of this until we get further information. And I'll put that on, and...
This is second, there's more, are there more questions?
Discussion on that before we call the, call the vote? Yes.
Has this been circulated to the lower tiers? Do we have their feedback on the interpretation of it, so we don't have to worry about that?
It was circulated.
Okay.
I received various replies, and it was, yeah, I definitely shared, you know, what the county was moving forward with, and I don't think any of the member municipalities were moving forward with, you know, anything on this at this present time.
Okay, and if I may, so, when you talked about, so, weather hazard is a defined term?
Yes.
We're on this amendment first.
Okay.
We're bringing it back, so we can deal with, with those further questions. So, I'm going to call the motion to defer this. All in favor? That motion is deferred. Thank you, Graham, for that input, and Counselor Fosbrook, we'll deal with that when, when it comes back, okay? And then, if you have any questions that may be, want to be answered by, by transportation's staff, you can, you can let them know. Okay. Counselor Fosbrook?
So, just to clarify, we amended the motion. Do we not have to address, or no, we deferred?
No, we, we deferred it.
Right.
We didn't amend it. Further discussion in the future. We're now down into addendum to PDR CW fourteen eighteen be received and that all written and oral submissions received on the plan of subdivision forty-two T two thousand eighteen oh five, known as Sunvale Homes, were considered, the effect of which helped to make an informed recommendation and decision, and that in consideration of the draft plan of subdivision application forty-two T two thousand eighteen dash oh five for lands described as part of divisions two and three of lot twenty-four concession, one east of Garifaxa Road, geographic township of Glenelg, the municipality of West, of West Gray, the Gray County Committee of the whole approves this plan of subdivision with a total of two hundred and forty-two residential units, subject to the conditions set out in the notice of declaration. Scott, we'll put this on the floor. Counselor Barfoot, Counselor Bell, it's all yours to talk about Sunvale Homes.
Great, thanks, Warden Halliday, and members of the committee. I just want to preface this presentation by saying that it's a really exciting time to be in planning at the county right now, and I know that might be counterintuitive to maybe some members of the public or some around the horseshoe, but, you know, everything from, from the official plan that was, the bylaw was adopted this morning, to just the amount of development interest we have around the county, and even, even what we have on our agenda today is a good reflection of that, in that we have five planning reports spanning four different municipalities, and, and we are seeing development interest everywhere. So, it's, it's a great time to be, to be working in planning, but I have a biased opinion on that. So, with that, I'll get on to the presentation. What we have before us is, is a plan of subdivision in Durham that's coming back to you. This was originally brought forward as an information report. The lands are in the northeast section of Durham. They're about seventeen point eight hectares in size, and if this subdivision is approved, there would be a new access on to Durham Road East, as well as the continuation of Jackson Street East there, just on, on the east side of Highway six. I should note that what you have, what you see before you on the screen right there is, is the plan of subdivision that was presented to you at the time of the information report, and it's also the plan of subdivision that was presented to the public at the public meeting. In this case, there was some comments and some questions and concerns from both the county council table, from the municipal council table, and, and also importantly, from members of the public. Following the public meeting, we met with municipal staff and we met with the developer and, and had a little chat about, about what we could do to address those concerns, and I will say, the developer in this regard was very receptive to all feedback and, and very eager to work with municipal staff and county staff to, to work through these concerns. And so, I'll just highlight on, on this slide, some of the concerns that were, were brought up, and then show you the next slide, which is, which is hopefully the resolution to those concerns. What you'll see in, in the northeast corner of the subdivision is two cul-de-sacs there. There was concern from a maintenance and connectivity standpoint, all those, about those cul-de-sacs. There was also concern that we have this number of residential units being proposed, and no parkland proposed at this time. There were further concerns with respect to drainage, but we'll address those later on in the report. So, what ended up happening was a redesign of the plan of subdivision. It did result in, in five less lots, so we're down to two hundred and forty-two lots. But as a, a staff, I do think it is a much better design in that we now have that cul-de-sac gone in the northeast corner, and in the northwest corner towards the stormwater block, we do have a park. And the park has been designed such that it would back on to the stormwater block, so even though it's a smaller block of land, it would feel larger, and we could still have some walking trails and recreational opportunities through that stormwater block, knowing that the, the pond itself would be fenced. What you'll also see in, in the northwest corner of the development is a future road allowance that would extend to the north if need be. And some of the discussion at the municipal table was that this road allowance isn't going to be needed in the short term. Those lands to the north of this development are not currently in the settlementary boundary, and so until such time as those lands are needed, that could actually be included as part of the parkland as well, such that the lands wouldn't just sit vacant and, and they would have more usable space by, by future residents of this community. They are looking at a good range of units in this regard, one hundred and eighteen single-detached lots, sixty semi-detached units, and sixty-four townhouses. The associated zoning amendment was passed by the municipality of West Gray just recently, and, and the various agencies have submitted their comments on this proposal. Oops. At this stage, there's no outstanding comments from any of the agencies. Groups like Conservation Authority and Utilities have all had their, their comments worked into the draft plan conditions on this development, and the municipality of West Gray has supported the proposed draft plan conditions as attached to the staff report. As I said, there was some concern, maybe we'll just go on to the next slide, actually. There was some concern at the public meeting about various things, some of which I've already talked about. One of the key concerns beyond sort of the connectivity in the parkland was with respect to the potential for flooding and drainage, and particularly on the west end of the subdivision, there was some neighbors that brought up concerns with respect to that. We did have the engineer take another look at this, and he assures us that the flows post-development will not be increasing, and, and so none of those residents will, will incur any additional water on the properties as a result of this development. We had another question at the public meeting with respect to whether or not hydro would be above or below ground, and in this case, they've stated it will be below, it will be below ground. Furthermore, at the public meeting, which is uncommon at a public meeting, we did actually hear praise for the development and, and praise for the developer in specific, so that was good to hear as well. As I said, there's no further agency concerns. Basically, with, with the information that's been put forward and the changes that have been made to the development in this regard, staff are satisfied that it does conform to the county official plan, conforms to the municipality of West Gray official plan, which covers Durham in this regard, as well, it's consistent with the principal policy statement and has regard for matters of public interest under the Planning Act. As such, it's our recommendation that the report be received and that the, the subdivision be draft-approved in this regard, but I would certainly be happy to take any questions if there are any.
Any questions of Scott on this project? Nice to see developers work with, with us here. That's great. Counselor Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. In a subsequent planning report, we have in the resolution the detail about the breakdown of single versus townhomes, and in this resolution, we don't. Is there a reason why we're not specific in the resolution that it includes sixty semis and sixty-four townhouses? Is that important?
Through you. In this case, that, that may be, just be a, a staffing thing in, in terms of two different authors. We could certainly put it in the resolution. In this case, because it's in the draft plan conditions, that would be enshrined into the, into the decision, should the committee make a decision today. And, and if they wanted to come in with different unit totals or a different makeup of units, they would have to apply for a red line revision. But in the future, to be more precise, staff can certainly include that in the resolutions. I apologize for that.
I just bring it up because, you know, the semis and the townhomes would be, you know, more closely, hopefully, meeting affordable housing definitions, right?
Yes, yes. And in this case, the, the developer's planner did state that, that there would be affordable housing in this development, but they aren't sure on the entire, on the final price of the units just yet.
Thank you for that.
That's good, and probably working on the same template, just go to... Yes, Counselor Greenfield?
Can I give us one? Scott, will this subdivision accommodate any on-street parking for visitors or whatever?
Go ahead.
That's a good question. I, I must admit, I don't know the answer to that. There will be, I should have mentioned, there will be sidewalks accommodated throughout this development. As to on-street parking, I, you know, I would defer to whatever current bylaws West Gray has in place in that regard, but I'm not aware. I could look into that with, with Brent Glazier, the Director of Infrastructure in that regard, but that wasn't raised throughout, so I'd, I'd need to look into that.
Did a road width accommodate parking on one side?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. Counselor Hicks?
Mr. Warden, there are two future road allowances. Any sense of when those future road allowances might be required?
So let's go back a bit here. That's a good question.
I saw one in the northwest section, and one on the east.
Yeah. So in this case, the lands to the east are also designated as residential in the West Gray official plan, and we have had people asking questions about those lands. We don't have any applications in just yet. So we would expect at some point, there will be a plan of subdivision application on those lands to the east. Those lands to the east also contain two potential future accesses to Durham Road, so there would be accesses through the two subdivisions, but also back to Durham Road. The lands to the north, as I stated earlier, we wanted to leave a connection there should development be needed, but they're not currently in the settlementary boundary. So those would be potentially sort of a much longer term. At the same point, with the amount of growth we've been seeing across the county, we didn't want to close any doors to preclude future development in that regard, but before future development could happen, there would need to be a settlementary expansion and some further study done in that regard. So while I don't have a timeframe for when the development could happen to the east, I will say there has been interest, and we would expect that at some point over the next few years for sure.
Mr. Warden, if I might, there is a path in the northeast corner that seems to be underlying. Is that a path? I see that the grade is quite steep there, but what is that?
Pull that slide up, the latest, no, the next one. Oh, that's it. Yeah, okay, sorry. So it's now up, Counselor Hicks, so dotted lines, you want to...
Yes, so if you look at the northeast corner, lots, I can't read the numbers exactly, 39 and going north, you see that sort of dotted path? What is that?
In this case, I apologize, it's tough to read on the scale of this. It's actually not a pathway in this regard. In the northeast corner, maybe if I just go back to the air photo, there are some woodlands in the northeast corner, so they did an environmental impact study here, and they did recommend retaining those woodlands. And they also recommended a buffer to any foundations. So sort of the first dotted line that you could see is the woodland itself, and then the second one is sort of the setback to the woodland. So that's where there would be no development, and although those lots would extend into the woodland, there couldn't be any excavations or buildings in that regard. And so that's why some of those lots in the northeast corner do have to be sized a little larger, because only a smaller portion of the lots themselves are buildable.
That's good to know. Thanks for that question. Anything else? Counselor Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Where there was concern expressed about the drainage to the existing neighboring properties, for lack of a better term, if there is, if we end up with a development that does cause drainage concerns and flooding to neighboring properties, who's accountable for that?
Sure. In this case, what would happen is through the, should the subdivision get draft-approved, there would need to be final detailed engineering worked out as part of the draft conditions. That engineering would be shared with the municipality of West Gray. It would also be shared with Conservation Authority in this regard, and stormwater facilities also get looked at by the Ministry of Environment, Conservation, and Parks. And then once those agencies are satisfied that the engineering is satisfactory, then ultimately, the subdivision would be registered, and the municipality would assume control of the stormwater facilities. And so if there was flooding in the future, most likely, the residents would come to the municipality. They would look to see whether everything's functioning okay, you know, is there any blockages, or is there anything that wasn't constructed to the manner it should be? And if there was anything, then they could go back to the developer potentially to ask questions in that regard, but if there was a failure down the road, once it was under municipal control, it might need to be a municipal solution in that regard. We have worked closely with the Conservation Authority on this one. They're satisfied with the conceptual work in this regard, but as I said, that final detailed engineering will really be key in this regard, just to make sure that everything functions the way it should.
So to paraphrase, if I may, long-term, once everybody's done the development and the municipality's assumed everything, it is the municipality that the residents are going to go to for any concern?
So in this case, the municipality would be the owner and operator of the stormwater facility. I do want to be cautious here in that I'm not giving any kind of legal opinion as to if there was an issue, who would be liable or anything else, but unless it's a condominium development, which in this case it isn't, most often, the municipality owns and operates the stormwater facilities and drainage in that regard.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, that's good, good discussion. Great to see some things happening out there. Okay, call the motion. All in favor? That motion is carried. Now we're going to move over to Hanover. PDR CW 3318 regarding an overview of the proposed plan of subdivision application 42T 2018-09, consisting of 98 residential units on lands described as part of lots 11, 12, 13, and 14 concession 1, NDR, Town of Hanover, Geographic Township of Bendit, be received for information. On the floor, Counselor Hicks, Seconder Counselor Woodbury, discussion on Hanover.
Great, thanks, Warden Halliday. So what we have before us is a proposed plan of subdivision that has been titled Soggy and Cedar Heights East. I should just clarify, we don't yet have a Soggy and Cedar Heights north, south, or west, but we understand there is a west one in the works. The subject lands are highlighted in red there, and they're 17.68 hectares in size, and we've got 98 proposed residential units on that. The immediate question that might pop to mind to some is, after having just reviewed Sunvale, which was approximately the same-sized piece of property, roughly 17 hectares, is why do we have 98 units proposed here and over 200 in the Sunvale case? In this case, it's because the lands involved are challenging from an environmental and hazard lands perspective. There's large portions of the lands, both in the east and west of the development, that can't be developed based on some flooding issues, but also based on the valley going down to the river there. So the developer has been very good at trying to maximize the density on the lands that are developable, but there's lands there that can't be touched for a number of reasons. The subject development involves an extension of 14th Street through these lands. There was an existing road allowance there, and it also involves a connection to the northern subdivision known as Brenly Estates, which you can see on the air photo as the dark gray line of 17th Street and 25th Avenue. I will note that this air photo is a few years old now, so that subdivision is actually under construction now, so some of those trees that you see to the north are actually houses now. Long-term, this extension of 14th Street would also connect down to the south to County Road 4, and it would align with the county road at the signalized intersection at Walmart there. Here's a copy of the actual subdivision itself. Similar to the Sunvale proposal, they are looking at a good mixture of units. They're looking at 48 detached dwellings, 18 semi-detached units, 12 townhouses, and then an additional 20 townhouses in the block in the extreme southeast of the development. As you can see, there is that connection to the north, and you can see that roughly the lot fabric of the Brenly Estates there as well. This is still very early stages on this one. There is a zoning amendment also required by the Town of Hanover in this regard. We have got the requisite studies and reports, and we're just now looking for feedback, both from council and from the public and agencies. We will be going to a public meeting at the Town of Hanover on November 5th on this one, so we're excited to get feedback in that regard. But certainly, if there's any early comments, questions, or concerns that this council may have, we'd love to hear them, because that way, we can look further into it throughout the development process, and hopefully bring you back a report at the end of the process, answering any questions that you may have. As such, the recommendation is that the report be received for information, but we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that. Any questions? Seeing none? Yes, Counselor Echols.
Is this, how close to the river does this come? Like, it'd be able to, I guess I'll expand a little bit more on to that, Scott. Like, it would be available for the individuals to be able to go down and bathe? Like, it is going to be a gated community and clothing optional, like a lot of other residents in that area?
No swimming? Is that one of your flyer questions up in the air and bounce back?
I think he bought a lot.
Right. I'm not moving there then? Okay. Any further comments from the peanut gallery? Okay, there we are. Let's call the motion. All in favor of receiving that for information. That's nice to see happening. Okay.
Thank you.
Now we're moving over to Southgate, and the PDR CW 3518 regarding an overview of proposed plan of subdivision application 42T 2018-08, consisting of 73 single-detached lots and 28 townhouse units, for a total of 101 units, on lands described as part lot 227 concession 2, SWTR, Geographic Township of Proton, and the township of Southgate be received for information. Stephanie. Let's put that on the floor. Counselor McGee, Counselor Clumpus. Okay, Stephanie, all yours.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. So the proposed plan of subdivision, some of you or most of you may recognize, was previously submitted under file number 42T-2016-09, and it was titled the Gilis-Gailis subdivision. I may be pronouncing that incorrectly. So there was an information report that was brought to Committee of the Hole in 2017, and the subject lands, the previous subdivision application was withdrawn, and the subject lands are now subject to a new proposal of subdivision. They're located, the lands are located on the west side of Dundalk, and they're within the primary settlement area. To the south of these subject lands are a subdivision called Cedar Point, as well to the east of the subject lands is the residential area of Dundalk, and surrounding the area to the north and the west are farming lands. Example here is the proposed subdivision. As you can note, the west side of the lands are simply slated for development at this time, and there's no plan for the east side of the portion of the lands to be developed for residential. The lands to be developed will be 4.5 hectares in size. The total lands are 8.5 hectares in size, which is 21 acres. The proposed plan of subdivision would create 73 single-detached lots and 28 townhouse units for a total of 101 units. The roads will be accessed through a series of internal roads. As well, there's Bradley Street to the south, or sorry, to the east of the subject property, which is currently in the settlement area of Dundalk. And as well, there will be a throughway internal road that will access the new Cedar Point subdivision to the south of the property. The proposed subdivision also requires a zoning bylaw amendment, and the application has recently been circulated to receive public and agency input. I'd like to further note that the proposed subdivision will be serviced by municipal services, although at this time, there's not enough reserve capacity in the well, and there's limited unreserved, uncommitted sanitary servicing capacity available at this time. As many of you may know, the township of Dundalk is currently awaiting approval from the province based on, to expand their well, and as well, they undertook an EA process to expand their sewage treatment expansion, and that was started in 2015, and anticipating completion of that in 2019. And back in September, we brought a report regarding servicing of draft approval subdivisions, and we would recommend, should the township of Southgate follow through with a draft approval of this application, that they may want to take a hybrid approach, which would, where capacity is not currently available to service this subdivision, and allocation at the time of registration or through a separate bylaw may be a feasible means of doing so. Public meeting has not yet been scheduled for this application, this subdivision, but it's anticipated to take place in early 2019. The recommendation is that this information report be received by Committee of the Hole.
Okay. Any questions? Counselor Fosbrook.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The reference to the, let me just make sure my words straight, new subdivision to the west known as Southgate-Cedar Point, draft-approved Southgate-Cedar Point. Where's that? I'm confused.
Where is that subdivision?
Yeah.
So it's the Todd Crescent to the south of the subject lands? That's where the Cedar Point subdivision is.
Okay, so that's what we're referring to locally as White Rose. So that's the first development of White Rose? That's what you're referring to?
No, so there are two separate subdivisions. The Cedar Point subdivision is the one to the south of the blue highlighted lands, and the White Rose subdivision is the blue highlighted lands. So the Cedar Point has been completed, it's a final draft-approved plan, and that took place in 2000, or that was, yeah, that recently, was recently approved.
Okay.
Yeah, just to further clarify on that. So we refer to it as Cedar Point, that was originally what was proposed in terms of the name. They often change the names, and in fact, so the proposed development for White Rose is now the same developer for the Cedar Point, which is now also can be considered as White Rose as well in terms of that development. So it's the same developer, and that has been registered now, and I believe development is underway on that site.
It's well underway.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought I was doing a good job keeping up, but I appreciate that, because we don't use that terminology, and thank you very much.
We find that with some files, they start off with one name, and sometimes they go to a different name for marketing purposes, or whatever it might be. And in some cases, there's two or three name changes, so it's, in some cases, it's difficult to track what those names are.
Okay. Further questions? Yes, Counselor McKeen.
Thank you. I guess I refer to page 2 of 112 in the report, and, you know, I guess it jumps out at me that municipal water capacity is not currently available for the proposed units, and I guess that this comes back to the discussion we had earlier on, that, you know, you talk about needing to go through an EA process, and knowing how long those things take to get through, I think that the township of Southgate's going to be under a lot of pressure to come up with some other form of servicing this development before the water and sewer capacity is actually there, and I think that it's, I think we're going to start reaching down a rabbit hole here, and lots of times, you get bit when you do that.
Okay, everybody, sorry, got distracted. Any further questions? All right, let's call the motion. All in favor? That motion is carried. Okay, we're getting a geographic tour today, so we're now into that, as per Gray County's purch... No, no.
You're on to Jay.
Jay. There it is.
Bottom of page.
Two-sided, yeah, sorry. Without a number on it, I got confused. Okay, that, we're gonna go there. I was right in the first place, but I just didn't have it. Okay. "That report, PRCW 3618 regarding an overview of proposed plan of subdivision application 42T 2018-06, consisting of 34 residential lots on lands described as part lot 26 concession 6, Town of the Blue Mountains, Geographic Township of Collingwood, be received for information." Randy. Mover and seconder. Wow. Sue Patterson, Alan Barfoot, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Warden. So to continue on with the exciting times, as Scott indicated, this is another new subdivision application that we have received. This one is in the Town of Blue Mountains. This one is in the Town of Blue Mountains. So, this report is just to provide an overview of that application. It's essentially what we call our information report. And we'll be bringing back a final report once we've had some further time to review the application, as well as to get comments from agencies, as well as, most importantly, the public. So, this proposed development is proposing 34 single attached dwelling units. It's located, as I mentioned, in the Town of Blue Mountains. It's located east of Camperdown Road and south of Highway 26. So, you can see that on the air photo on the screen there. That's just south of Old Lake Shore Road. And Highway 26 is just to the north. Georgian Trail is, also runs by, it's just south of Highway 26 there, as shown on the screen. The lots would gain access to a proposed new private condominium road that would gain access off of Lake Shore Road. And I'll go to the subdivision in a second here. Servicing to the proposed subdivision would be via municipal water and sewer services. And so, that's what's proposed from a servicing perspective. This is the proposed plan that's been submitted. As you can see, there's an open space block that's proposed at the back of lands. This particular property has significant elevation changes as you go from north to south. As you can see, there's some existing residential lots that are essentially on top of that ridge, so to speak. And then, the open space lands would be where that significant elevation change occurs. And there's a number of woodlands and trees within that area. So, that's proposed to be all protected within that open space block. As you can see, the proposed private condominium road would be essentially a crescent with two connections off of Old Lake Shore Road. At this time, it's, a number of reports have been submitted with the application. We've posted those on the website. And those have been circulated to various agencies for review and comment. As I mentioned, a detailed analysis of provincial county and town policy has not been offered at this stage. Following a comprehensive analysis and final recommendation will be provided at a later date, following that public and agency review process, including a public meeting that will be held by the Town of Blue Mountains at a later date. So, at this stage, we're just bringing this forward for information. And of course, if there's any questions or early comments from council on the proposed development, we'd be more than happy to take those into consideration.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions on this project? Everybody comfortable with that? I don't see any question? Oh, Counselor Ardell. There you are.
Thank you. Question to Randy then, Block 2. Is that the Nipissing Ridge?
I believe it's part of the Nipissing Ridge. Yes. And so, yeah, so that's where there's, as I note, significant elevation change on that property. There has been previous developments, proposed developments on the site. The site has a long history.
Long, long history.
Those, all those applications have now been withdrawn and closed. This one is now just starting fresh with a new proposal. And so, that's what's before us today.
Yes, because it's been around for a few years. And yes, I've seen many developments try to bring their development back into the ridge. And we've always protected the Nipissing Ridge. So, I have a concern on that. And I was also looking for access for, you know, it is, you can walk through there. And because you've got different trails all the way through into the back where Georgian Peaks is and up through Camperdown Roads. So, just looking, I don't see any walking trails or anything proposed there. Or a lot of people park at the bottom of Camperdown Road and walk up that road. So, is there going to be any access? Because that's the Georgian Trail 2 there, I believe.
Yes, go ahead.
Great, great question. And as part of the pre-consultation discussion, there was definitely indication of the desire to have some of those trails connect. So, as you can see, there is a trail block that's proposed along the entire frontage, along Old Lake Shore Road. I think the desire is also to, as part of the open space block, that there be a trail connection that would also form to connect up to the top part. And then, having at some point, along Old Lake Shore Road connecting to Georgian Trail as well. So, that way, there's an overall trail connectivity and network that's established. So, that was part of the discussions. I know that will be, for sure, part of the review and comments going forward, is making sure those trail connections are established.
Yeah, I hope so, because we worked long and hard. And with having a whole new council, they won't have the history on this at all. Because there was a lot of work put into this whole area with walking trails and protection of the ridge. And that's why a lot of these subdivisions didn't go through because of that.
Okay. Thanks for the update on that. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll call the motion. All in favor? Motion's carried. Okay. Have a quick trip over to Laura Bay. That the report, PDRCW 3718 regarding an overview of proposed plan of subdivision application 42T 2018-10 consisting of 38 residential lots and a future multi-residential development block on lands described as Block 1 and part of Block 2 are P16M-8 Town of the Blue Mountains be received for information. Put that on the floor. Dr. Burley, Counselor Woodbury is on the floor for discussion. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. This is another information report on a recent application that we've received. This is Phase 4 essentially of an overall master plan development known as Laura Bay, located in the Town of Blue Mountains, just west of Thornberry. The proposal is to create a total of 38 single attached residential lots and a future development block for multi-residential units. Subject lands are on the screen. The proposed subdivision is located on Block 1 and part of Block 2, Plan 16M-8 in the Town of Blue Mountains. As I mentioned, they are part of an overall master plan development known as Laura Bay. And this proposed subdivision will represent the fourth phase of this master plan development. The subject lands are currently vacant. As you can see on the screen, there is, some of the roadway that's being proposed has already been built, as shown on the air photo. The majority of block is covered by trees. Lands surrounding the subject lands primarily consist of the existing golf course at Laura Bay, as well as previous phases of the overall Laura Bay development, and as well as future vacant lands that are, again, associated with part of the overall master plan development. Servicing to the subdivision will be via municipal water and sewer services. So, I apologize for the size of that. There is also an excerpt of the plan in the proposed package, as well as links to the plan that's on the website. The proposal, as I mentioned, is to create 38 single attached lots. So, those are the lots you can see on the screen there. And then, the future multi-residential block is at the north end, the tip of the subject lands, as you can see on the proposed plan up there. The, that block is known as Block 39. And that would be developed through a future condominium application and site plan application that could include an additional 36 residential multi-attached units proposed within three separate three-story 12-unit buildings, equalling a total of 36 units. Access to lots would be via two public roads. One would be an extension of West Ridge Drive, which is already, as mentioned, has been built. And the second road would be a crescent shown as Street A on the proposed plan. A zoning amendment application has been submitted to the Town of the Mountains as well for this application. The number of reports have been submitted with the application. Those have been, again, posted on the website and circulated to agencies. And we're looking for comments back from folks. So, at this stage, again, it's just an information report. We will be doing a detailed analysis following the review process, as well as a public meeting that will be held for this proposed application to get comments from the public as well. And then, we'll bring back a final report to council with a recommendation for this proposed development.
Thanks, Randy. Good information. Yes, Counselor Ardell.
Thank you. Appendix B, significant woodlots. That is a complete woodlot there. So, all of that will be cut down to put in these units then?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, the majority of those woodlands would be removed. Part of the review process, I'm assuming we'll be looking at trying to retain as many trees as possible as part of the conditions, as well as potentially further replanting post-development in order to try and put back some of those trees. But you're correct in that most of those trees would be removed. Just as an update in terms of the mapping, because at the time when we put the mapping in place back in, when it was approved by the board in 2012, looking at this again, because of the overall, because this is a master plan development and the intent has always been that these lands would be developed. We've actually, as part of a new official plan, removed parts of the significant woodlands within this area. Because they are within that planned development, they are within the settlement area. So, that is something that has been corrected as part of the new official plan. But based on our current official plan, they are identified as significant woodlands.
So, just a question, Mr. Warden. So, are you proposing to put anything in for clear cutting of significant woodlots then? Do we have any policies regarding those and making sure that when development happens, that they just don't come in and clear cut? We've had a development in Thornberry, that that's what's happened. And now, they can't develop that. So, the woodlot's completely gone and it's just scrub land now, because they wouldn't, they couldn't build.
Through you, Mr. Warden. So, our overall intended desire is to, is to work with landowners and developers to go through the process. And then, once you're at a draft approval stage, you have exemptions under the county's Forest Management bylaw to cut the trees that were agreed upon through that process. There was an environmental pack study that was done for this property. And that's the correct process, I guess, is what I'll say. There are times where we have trees that are cleared and cut outside of a process, outside of the process that's required under the Forest Management bylaw. We are working on trying to develop what we are calling our Call Before You Cut campaign. And so, we'll be trying to provide that to landowners, especially within our settlement areas that have some of these woodlands still on their properties, that, just letting them know that they need to call before they cut. And there is a process that they would have to go through in order to be able to clear those trees. As part of our new official plan, we've also incorporated better and clearer language, we hope, with respect to tying the Forest Management bylaw with our sniffet woodlands. The two have been somewhat disconnected. So, we're trying to integrate the two. And we'll also be looking at updating our Forest Management bylaw to speak to some of those features as well. So that the official plan and the Forest Management bylaw essentially are in the same language, so to speak. So, that will be something that will be coming forward to the new council in 2019.
Subsequent to that then? So, then, on this development, there wouldn't be any sidewalks in there. But on the main West Ridge, would there be sidewalks proposed along there? Because eventually, these roads are all going to come forward and come out and connect to the next subdivision over. So, is there any sidewalks proposed to that? That's question one. And then, question two would be, where's the fill coming from? Is this going to, the fill from all of these homes, is it going to continue the berm towards Meaford then?
Through you, Mr. Warden. So, on the first question, so I know there's, based on the previous developments along in Laura Bay, there is the proposal to have a sidewalk that would run along the north end of West Ridge Drive down to the clubhouse area. So, we'll be working with the developer and the town to ensure that that continuation of the sidewalk is built into, as part of this development from a connectivity perspective. So, that's a great comment and great point, and I've written that down. Question two, in terms of the fill, good question. It's, I think it's early stages that we will, well, I've noted as well in my notes. So, we can ask the developer with respect to that. I know there has been some concerns in the past about the berm that's being constructed on the front of the Highway 26. They have had permits from MTO to construct that. I just drove by there the other day, and it seems to be a continuation of that berm. So, we'll be working with the town and developer on whether or not this particular development is part of that continuation of the berm, or where the fill will be coming from for this site.
So, a question on that. Can we restrict what's going into that berm? Because there's wood pallets, there's concrete and contaminated soils. Could be, could be. I'm not saying there is. But, you know, you read in your municipal world and in your rural Ontario about fill coming in, and we don't know if it's contaminated or not. So, should be checking to make sure that that's not contaminated. They did have a permit, it was part of the subdivision agreement many years ago to complete that berm. I remember that, but not for what's included in the content.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I don't know the exact details in terms of what was agreed upon previously. But what I would recommend, I guess if municipalities have, don't have something in place as a municipal fill bylaw, that would spell out some of those restrictions and those requirements. I believe the township of Chatsworth recently went through a fill bylaw process. So, it's something that we would recommend if the municipality doesn't have a fill bylaw. It's something you may want to consider.
Good. Yes, Counselor Greenfield.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you, Mr. Scherzer. Just on the topic of this berm on Highway 26, and as a member of council of the municipality immediately to the northwest of the legislature, I understand through the Gazebo Conservation, permission from Gazebo, that there was the original permit for the original berm, that fill could be dumped to a height of two and a half meters, which is about eight feet. I'm hoping in the future that between the county and our neighbors in the Town of Blue Mountains, that this rather unsightly gathering of tree trunks, fill, and a bit of concrete in the new one, will be addressed in a very cosmetically approved manner. And that will end up being a physical asset to both the Blue Mountains and their leave it to the northwest. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that lower tier responsibility?
In this case, there are a number of agencies involved with at least the previous berm, we'll call it. So, there's MTOs involved with respect to, as well as Counselor Greenfield indicated, conservation authorities has been involved, because there are some regulated areas in that area as well. And I believe the town has been involved in the past, as well as the county. And of course, the developer. So, it's a matter of, so I'm hearing those comments loud and clear in terms of, with respect to that berm. So, we'll have some of the further discussions with the town, the developer, moving forward with respect to that berm piece.
Okay, well, that's good information. Counselor Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Block 39, if I want to call it to the tip of the thumb, this proposed 36 residential units, which I'm assuming is going to be much higher density because of its size. What's the plan for access there?
Through you, Mr. Warden. So, the plan for access, it hasn't been finalized yet. So, that's why it's just being proposed as a future multi-residential block with plans to come in after, like, at a later date. So, there will be condo plans, as well as site plan applications that would be required to develop that tip. But it's, my understanding is that it would be very similar. There'd be a condo road or condo lane that would essentially loop through that tip. And then, there would be three three-story buildings that are proposed at this stage that would be on that block.
Street A?
Yes. It would be connecting to Street A. Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fosbrook.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Randy, on page 111, under provincial policy and legislation, it states, "Following the public and agency review period, staff will provide a more fulsome analysis of the provincial policy." No, actually, you know what? That's not where I wanted to go. I apologize. Next paragraph, county official plan. Last sentence states, "County official plan policies will be further assessed following agency review and the public process." Is "assessed" the correct word? Because we, could you paraphrase that statement, please?
Sure. Yeah, assessed, analyzed. So, part of our view is going through and analyzing the county official plan policies with what's being proposed. So, whether it's the word "assessed" or "analyzed," So whether it's the word "assessed" or "analyzed," it's a, the, part of the review is to ensure that, at the end of the day, that this proposed development conforms with those official plan policies as well as is consistent with provincial policy. So that will come forward as part of the review. At this stage, because we're so early in the process, we haven't received any agency comments yet, we haven't received any comments from the public, so it could change as a result of those comments. And so that's where we want to have that process, do that further analysis and then bring back a final report to council with a recommendation at that stage.
Thank you for that. And if I may, are any of the commenting agencies, do you anticipate the commenting agencies to contribute to the dialogue about how this meets our official plan or not? Because I don't expect that the public is going to be citing the official plan. Some of them might, but not too many.
Through you, Mr. Warden. So each agency has kind of their own, I guess, guidelines and policies, so they'll be using their documents for that. Conservation authorities in the past, they've, where they've, the municipality and the county has requested a natural heritage review, they will review it and assess it on the basis of not only provincial policy, but county official plan and local official plan policies as well. So part of their comments on the natural heritage review piece would be to review it from an official plan perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor of this motion? That motion is carried.
Great. Thanks, Randy. Thanks.
Good, exciting times. All right, we're going to go back to the two items that were pulled from the consent section. The first one being, where is it?
A and B.
A and B. All right. Section A is that the Ministry of Transportation correspondence stated October the 2nd, 2018, regarding the 2018 Association of Municipalities of Ontario Conference delegation be received for information. Put that on the floor. Counselor Fosbrook, seconder. Sir Woodbury. Okay. So Counselor Fosbrook?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So the information that the delegation brought to this discussion, has that information been published? Like the brief that went with the delegation?
We don't normally.
Go ahead, yes.
I thought it was. It was made available to all members that were part of the delegation and I can't see that it was not made public. I just assumed it was public.
If you don't have a copy, we can get you a copy.
We don't normally publish our delegations, like post them on the website. Certainly a process that we could revisit, but that hasn't been past practice. I actually was anticipating that you were going to ask for follow-up and I can provide council with an update as to recent activity on this file, if that would be helpful.
I think we'll do that and if anybody wants to, you know, look at these submissions that happened at AMO, perhaps that could be something in the future that we can just include behind this when it's being presented.
I do want to, you know, I think it's important that council feel that when they sit down in a delegation that, you know, this is an opportunity to have a discussion with your MPP or the minister on sometimes on topics that are of some sensitivity. And, you know, the information that we're providing to enable those discussions also sometimes needs to be handled somewhat sensitively and I wouldn't want to do anything that would, you know, prevent us from being able to make the most utility out of those conversations. With regard to this particular file in the Community Transportation Grant Program, so we attended that delegation to have a discussion with the parliamentary assistant, in this case Minister Yakubuski being otherwise engaged, and expressing the county's desire to have further information about the status of the Community Transportation Grant Program. We have not as yet heard anything more specific as to what was going to happen with that proposed grant. And we did write to the ministry asking for a further update, letting the ministry know that Gray County is supporting the service continuation of the pilot program with our own internal resources, that we intend to continue to do that until the end of this calendar year, but that beyond December 31st, the county would not be in a position to continue on as was directed around this table. So that's the situation that we are in, that correspondence was provided to Bill Walker and also to Minister Yakubuski. And Bill Walker did give this to Minister Yakubuski in his hand during question period on Monday. So I'm hopeful that we will get some confirmation one way or another on the status of our grant that we were supposed, that we had been notified that we'd been successful in receiving, if that was actually going to come to fruition very shortly.
That's good information. I know everybody was sent an email on what Mr. Walker was doing on our behalf, so hopefully it will be a little bit of a gesture to let them know that we're still anticipating answers. Okay, any further discussion on this correspondence? All in favor of accepting this? That's approved. The next one is, thank you, Kevin. That the Ministry of Agriculture, Food and Rural Affairs correspondence stated October the 5th, 2018, regarding the 2018 Association of Municipalities of Ontario Conference delegation be received for information. Put that on the floor. Counselor Fosbrook, seconder. Counselor Harley Greenfield. You pulled it? Questions, comments?
Well, to the C A O's point earlier, this is the one that I was more looking for an update on and it's a pretty topical discussion, so I'm just wondering what can be shared as outcome from the delegation.
Adam, so you?
I mean, I have to note, I found it kind of interesting that the author of the letter said, "I welcome any feedback that would address your concerns." So are they expecting feedback from us?
It is an interesting turn of phrase.
Isn't it though? Do you have any insight?
Yes, we have heard nothing further from OMAFRO, from Ministry of Finance. We, as you were aware, this is not the first time that we've approached the province on this particular issue and so I think we can only continue to raise it, but I don't, I have not heard anything further other than this correspondence.
As they continue to say, don't ask us any questions till after November the 8th. So perhaps they will keep that on our calendar and then we can ask more exciting questions. Kevin? Yes?
It's interesting the way that that was worded and I did have the privileges fitting in on the delegation. It was very enlightening to see the depth of knowledge that the minister has on taxation, farm levels. That was extremely interesting. But since then, there has been a proposal come forward that, quite frankly, up until a few months ago, I'd never really thought of myself. If the province is looking towards having a cheap food policy or supporting farmers and not doing it on the back of property taxpayers having to pick up more of the subsidization on taxation towards the farming community, a program that should be coming from the province, could we suggest that they're looking for suggestions and solutions that the province, who is the one that sets the educational tax rate, that that educational tax rate be dropped for the farming community specifically? It's one of the ideas that is put out there, that have come across in the last short while, that if the province wants to do that, it's not a municipal, it's not a property tax solution, it's one from the province to support agriculture across the province. And that way, it wouldn't be rural Ontario that would be supporting our agriculture who, whether it's 80% or 90%, end up in the urban area and the urban areas don't share in it. If it was through the school tax, then the province and it would be the urban areas that would be picking up the subsidy on that. And if that's possible and they're asking for solutions, that's about the only one that I can come up with that would be plausible for the province to look at.
Well, that's good, that's feedback, right?
That's what I would say. That's what they're asking here, which is, being at this for 18 years, it's the first time I've really kind of seen that type of language, so let's put it back to them.
Well, do you want to make, as later on, notice a motion on that?
I would suggest that an appropriate next step might be a report that analyzes some of what that could look like within a Gray County context, to the best of our ability.
Yes, we also asked Hardiman for 100% and that he sorts it out. But anyhow, that was, I think appropriate would be a report, Kim would like to work on that. Do you want to make a notice of motion on that afterwards? We'll accept. Yes, Barb?
I don't know whether I need a notice of motion or just direction to staff, asking our CEO to bring the report back with that.
Okay, that'll be attached.
My time of, I'm limited in time here to get notice of motions prepared and put forward and passed.
I understand. We all are. Face that fate. Counselor Columbus?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And just further to that question, a thought that immediately popped into my mind with your suggestion, Counselor Echols, was that how would this impact our push forward to have the province look more robustly at increasing the funding formula for rural schools? I would certainly want that taken into consideration with that kind of a proposal because at one time that was recommended from the previous provincial government that, yes, indeed, they would be looking at increasing the rural, the formula for rural schools and I think that's really important. We're all rural communities here and suffer for the lack of funding to keep our schools not only open, but providing the kinds of curriculum that are going to advance our, the education for our young people.
Good, solid point. Is that enough information there? Property? We'll tweak a little bit more, but that, we've obviously covered two areas, rural school taxation and then farm taxation. There's a good, good, good analysis there, good solution. All right, so let's, everybody will bring that motion forward for approval? All in favor? Okay, so that's that. We now have gone through.
Is everybody okay?
Are you starving yet or you want to hang on here for the closed session? We can come back, it's up to you.
Let's do it.
Let's do it is all in favor of let's do it?
Be in favor, let's just do it.
Don't, hmm?
Just do it.
Do it.